We'll call the meeting to order for the legislative session 2023-02 for Wycomico County Council. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do. Father?
Father. Thy kingdom come; Thy will be done on earth as it is. Today our veil will be broken; forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Ladies and gentlemen, attention. Let us remember the name of the kingdom. Pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I obtain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion of corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have a proclamation to recognize National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Mr. Edwin Thomas is here. Mr. Thomas, how are you? We're going to meet you right over here at the podium. Councilman James Nguyen will present the proclamation for you. It's good to have you here this morning.
Thank you.
This proclamation of Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas human trafficking is a serious problem on the Eastern Shore, where traffickers use violence, threats, and other manipulative tactics to force and coerce young and adults, individuals, to engage in commercial sex acts or to provide labor or services against their will. And whereas there have been reports of child sex trafficking in Eastern Shore counties since 2013, and 127 human trafficking victims have been rescued throughout Maryland. And whereas the Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force is engaged in actions by encouraging and promoting awareness and prevention of human trafficking. And whereas January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month, which recognizes that human trafficking consistently occurs throughout the United States and emphasizes the need to focus on prevention, prosecution, partnership, and support for the survivors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Wycomico County Executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim January as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Wycomico County. Thank you.
Would you like to say a couple of words, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for taking action on this proclamation. Human trafficking is not new to Wycomico County. It is not new to the city of Salisbury. You've had some experiences, so we're delighted you're taking this action to bring more attention to the existence of human trafficking and a lot of folks' efforts in anti-human trafficking. So thank you for doing that. The more attention we can draw to this, the more we can make the public aware about human trafficking, the more we can prevent it and curtail it. So thank you for taking this action. The more you can do to draw attention to it and the anti-human trafficking and a lot of officials in your area that are working hard on it, and we bring those to your attention. I'll leave a couple of brochures about human trafficking generally and about human trafficking on the Eastern Shore for you to look at in the future. Thank you.
Appreciate it. You could put those right on the table there next to the agendas. Thank you. Sandy, how are you?
Good morning. How are you? So the first item on the agenda is Resolution Number 02-2023 to authorize the continuation of an appeal of a circuit court order in civil case number C-22, CV-22-000095, and civil case number C-22, CV-22-000229, involving two retired Wycomico County deputies. And Mr. Paul Wilbur should be here if there's any questions.
I obtain a motion to approve Resolution 02-2023. Second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Question postponed.
Motion to postpone is a second.
Second.
Postponing until the first meeting, excuse me. Yeah, postponing until the first meeting in February, correct, Miss Sandy?
Yes, that's correct.
There's a motion to postpone is a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Resolution 02-2023 has been postponed. The reason for the postponement, for those that are following this, is to allow our attorneys' time to finalize what they have told us is they're very close to a settlement agreement, which is a great thing, I think, for the deputies in the county as a whole. So, thanks again.
And that's all we have today.
Thank you, Miss Sandy. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Got a lot of people here. We have no public comments. Okay. At this time, that concludes the public comments. Yes. Sir?
Does this mean like any issue?
Any issue.
Anything that's gonna be coming forth on you?
Yes. Yes, yes. This is the only opportunity for public comment on anything today. Thank you. I believe. I don't think there's any other. Yeah, that's it.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Abresh. I'm here concerning the county's issue concerning the liquor dispensary. I have owned a liquor store. I've run a liquor store in this county for 25 years. There are three privately-owned liquor stores in this county, along with the three dispensaries. And hearing the straddle bug around and in the newspapers, I'm not exactly sure where the county's going and what they're going to do about this. My license requires me to own a restaurant. My license requires me to be contiguous to my restaurant. My license requires me to be a certain square footage to the restaurant. And so therefore, I wanted to find out exactly, how is the county's issue about the dispensary going to affect my license? And the other two persons who own licenses, and I found licenses in operated private liquor stores in this county. Currently, I've been told that I represent roughly a little over 50% of all of the sales that the county makes in their wholesale department. So I'm a pretty big customer for the county at this point in time. So I just don't know exactly. I just wanted to find exactly what's going to happen. Is my license? They said that there's going to be 10 new licenses. Is that 10 new licenses in addition to the three existing, plus the three county dispensaries? So that's 16 for the county? Or is it the 10 including my license and the other two individuals' license? You know, that's the concern that I bring forth. I don't really know, so I was just going to ask those types of questions.
Give your name again, please.
Bruce Abresh. A-B-R-E-S-C-H.
And where's your establishment?
It's called Buster's Wine and Spirits.
Buster's, yeah, I know Buster's.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Abresh. We'll keep that in mind when we have our work session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
Thank you for having me. My name's Tom Noor from Southern Boys Concepts. We have Sobos, The Red Roost, Boonies, Evo. I think that's it. Bull Lips. Anyway, I just wanted to kind of speak my piece because we've been talking about this for years. And, you know, I think it's taken us a while to get together collectively to address this and appreciate you guys actually looking into it a little further. But we've, you know, we've got a competition problem here, number one, I think. You know, for years, you know, we didn't have a problem because Worcester County was, you know, they were run the same way, Somerset County. But now, you know, they're able to buy direct. So we're actually paying, what is it, 15% more after the discount? At least 15% more on every bottle of liquor that we buy than the counties that are right next to us that buy from, you know, the second, you know, right from the distributor. And so therefore, we have to absorb all of that cost in order to compete, which doesn't make sense, right? Because if we charge $8 for a drink and they charge $8 for a drink, they're going to make more money because they're paying 15% less. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Therefore, in order for us to compete, we have to keep it at the same price in order to keep people in town. And I think everyone's aware here of the growth of Berlin. You know, why, you know, people would move there. If we have to then charge what we need to charge in order to make margin, then, you know, so if I have to charge $10 just to maintain that same margin, you know, who's to say that we're, why wouldn't someone just move down to Berlin? Which you're seeing a lot of these pro, more pro-business things going on down there. Obviously, they're exploding. We're not. I would like to, you know, I just think that we need a little bit of parity right there. So that's one of the issues. You know, just from a fair standpoint, I appreciate the jobs and everything they have. I believe that, you know, I believe they'd be absorbed into the, you know, into the new licenses or whatever. Actually, I'm one of the holders of the private licenses, in fact. But I just think from a competition standpoint, it's not fair. I think there's probably some other points of view from the on-premise side, restaurants that, you know, that probably want to be heard as well. But that's my piece on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noor.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Justin Schaub. I represent Brew River. I want to echo Mr. Noor's comments, you know, about the competition with the other counties and things like that. But I also like to add, for us with the rising, you know, the rapidly rising wage increases that are coming down the pipe nationally and in Maryland here, the rising costs of, you know, every input to our business, you know, by being able to buy direct from our distributors to save that 10 or 15% depending on the size of the bottle that you buy, it gives us sort of like, you know, like a buffer to try to absorb some of these expenses, to try to be able to pay these wages that our employees deserve and, you know, that are mandated by the state. You know, as we get the new minimum wage coming up, you know, it increases every year, we can't leave some of our longstanding team members at the lower wage. We have to increase them too, and they deserve it, and we're happy to do it. It's just, this is another, you know, piece of the puzzle that would just kind of help us absorb some of those costs. Like, the costs are rising, and it's really a tough environment. You know, our food costs are rising. If anybody's ever been to a grocery store, you can see that. You know, our beer costs are rising. Everything's rising. And, you know, having to pay that extra 15% when, on the Eastern Shore, we're the only county now that does that, you know, it's a detriment to our business, and it definitely stifles our reinvestment into our property, at least. I'm speaking for myself. So, you know, we're in big, we're huge supporter of being able to buy directly from the distributor. And I don't understand how the bill's actually written, but, you know, if you can, maybe you have a choice of buying from the county and the distributors. You know, we're in support of that. It's just great for us to have the opportunity, the way we operate our businesses, to be able to buy direct from our distributor that save that money and reinvest it into our business. That's the goal here. And, you know, pay our employees and, you know, all the other things that come along with it. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Yes.
Wes Hannah, also with Brew River. Echoing the guys' thoughts, and I just wanted to add, being with our establishment, how big we are, we are taking some three, four trips. It's just not efficient to have our guys go back and forth, back and forth, truckloads. I see it with, excuse me, Delaware. We have a location, Harpoon Hannah's there. We see the benefits of tax-free state, the margins we make on our drinks there, and see both sides of the spectrum. It is a detriment to our business and the margins and trying to compete and survive in this economy. All right? Thanks.
John, if I'm part of the open work session, will I have the opportunity to say?
Yes, you will, Michael. Thanks. Any other public comments? All right. That concludes public comments. At this time, we open the floor for council comments. None? Okay. Yes, Joe?
No, I'm good.
No, you're okay. All right.
I just wanted to say, make it public. January 31st, if I'm absent...
Bring that mic down to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. God, forget that. I think they can hear me. I'm loud.
I know.
January 31st, I have to have open heart surgery. And I won't be here for two of the meetings. And I'm hoping the third meeting I will be here so you can hear what I have to say. But it's a very serious thing, and I'm going across the bridge. But what I'm going to do before I leave, I'm going to do a fact sheet of some of the things to communicate with the district and other people of things that I've had, that I've done since I've been on the council. I enjoy what I do. As I said before, I'm project-oriented, and I believe in being fair. And District One that I represent is very important to me because some of the things we're going lacking that I saw that needed to be done, especially playgrounds and affordable recreation for the children that live there. So I'm going to be, when I get able to have the phone in my hand or something, I will be communicating with the people. But I believe in being transparent, and I don't think, when you don't see me, that I don't care, because I'll be thinking about you, and I'll be kind of, I can't get my blood pressure up, but I'll be worried that I can't be there to stress, explain what I think and what I disagree or agree with. So again, it's been a pleasure so far, and I'm enjoying it. And when I come back, as I told, my phone is 24-hour day because I'm up all night, so if you call me 1 o'clock in the morning, I'll return your call 1:30. And so, just like I said, I enjoy it. And the gentleman here behind me, they have helped me with some of my disabilities. And they've been very respectful to me, and I think we're going to be a good council. And I'm glad that they're here to work with them. The young man down the way here, James, he's been a big help. And he's like a son to me, and he brought my stuff in today because I couldn't get a handicap parking space. So, anyway, I'm just happy to be here with the council.
Thank you, Councilman Shields, and good luck too.
Thank you.
Very much so. Any other council comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn so we can go into open work session.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is the presentation of Lower Shore Court-appointed special advocates. Jerona Smith? There we are. You can come right here. Yeah, we'll have you at the table. Thanks.
This is our first time.
Glad to have you here.
Okay, so what?
Just take a seat and, for the public, let us know your name and who you represent. And then you have the floor.
Okay, I'm Jerona Truitt Smith. I am the Regional Director for Lower Shore CASA.
And I'm Jamie Manning, the Executive Director of the Life Crisis Center. I'm usually over there getting the proclamations.
And just so everyone knows, the CASA is the Court-appointed Special Advocates.
Yes.
Okay, you have the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Again, my name is Jerona Smith with Lower Shore CASA. CASA does stand for Court-appointed Special Advocates, and it's exactly what it says it is. These are, the judges appoint everyday citizens to serve as advocates on behalf of abused and neglected children. Initially, Lower Shore CASA served in Worcester County, which a long time ago, I believe, there was also a program in Wycomico County. But I guess something happened with funding, and so that program was no longer to be. So maybe about three years ago, they started working to bring the program back to Wycomico County, and really a push, a huge push, from Judge Sarbans, who really wanted to bring Lower Shore CASA back to Wycomico. And not only did we expand to serve Wycomico, we also expanded to serve Somerset. So now we're like a tri-county program. And I just want to give a little bit, a tidbit about what our volunteers do, you know, on a daily basis, and some insight that I've had from the program. Some of these children that come through Lower Shore CASA, I'll take it back to, I used to work for Head Start, you know, with Shore Up several years ago. And a lot of these kids come through that program, starting at three years old, you know, moving up. Well, it's, I think it's a really sad day, you know, when they were in the Head Start program. We noticed that there were issues with the family then. But some of these same kids that I was a family service worker for, case manager for at Head Start, I have seen come across my desk now, you know, as teenagers, through this, coming through the system. They also have criminal cases. There's such a huge problem, I don't want to say problem, but an issue with our youth, especially here in Wycomico County. And we are trying our best to boost up our volunteer numbers, but we could really appreciate some of the help, some backing from the council, you know, to help us get the program out here. We need just people to come in. Of course, we do a background check and things like that. But we really need some people. It doesn't matter, you don't have to be, have a white-collar job. You can have a blue-collar job. We just need somebody who's willing to come in. And the disparity that exists between males of color who come into the system more so than any other race and having volunteers to match that. For the longest period, we had one male of color serve as a volunteer on our program. And I mean, we used him as much as we can because some of the parents would request it. They requested, you know, men of color because there are none in the homes. And some of these young men, they don't know what that looks like or feels like to have someone that invested in them, to actually go to their schools, to meet with them, take them to the park, take them bowling, to invest some time in them so that when it's time for them to go to court, we can actually advocate for their best interests based off of what we know about that child. And that is what the courts, the judge, we work at the discretion of the judge. The judge relies on us for that bit of information. We are his eyes, or her, we have magistrate codes, and, well, she's not there, but Marvel as well. You know, we are their eyes and ears outside of that courtroom. Of course, DSS is there. They do their part, CPS. There are other agencies that do their job. But the one thing the courts did not want was another professional to serve these children. They just want an everyday person to be able to advocate in the courts on behalf of that child's best interest. And that is what we do as a CASA program. And Jamie's going to give some...
Sure. Well, we were super excited to take on Lower Shore CASA and expand it into Somerset, Wycomico Counties, as well as continuing to maintain Worcester County. First, let me say thank you for recognizing National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Life Crisis recently brought on a regional navigator for human trafficking to serve Wycomico and the surrounding counties. The children that our CASAs are serving are some of the most vulnerable, susceptible victims to human trafficking, foster children, children that are being abused and neglected every day. Having CASAs can help minimize that. It can help nip it early before it becomes a bigger problem. Right now, we are funded by the Administrative Office of the Courts. We do receive a significant amount of funding for that, but it doesn't even cover all the salaries for my staff. As you know, Life Crisis is fully funded by grants and fundraisers. That's what we rely on. We don't bill victims for services. We don't bill insurance or any of that. We do require a match for the Administrative Office, for that grant that we receive, which the match would be at least $145,000. We do attempt other avenues of funding. We are exploratory with all of that. But we do need that funding, and would hope the council would possibly consider us in their budget in the future for that. But that's kind of all. We've been very successful in the six months that we brought the program to Wycomico County. We recruited over 20-some new volunteers. But the courts are steadily assigning cases. Kids enter foster care every day around the world. So right now, we currently have approximately 53 CASA cases and 63 advocates. So we're doing good, but that number, like I said, is climbing every day in the tri-county area. So we appreciate your support in spreading the word, and we'll sign all of you up for the next training, right? Isn't that what you all said? So thank you for your time and appreciate all of this. Thank you.
And we get brochures about the program.
Okay, great. If you can leave them, again, at the table over there, that'd be great. That way, anybody in the audience can pick them up as well. Josh?
I was just going to say, you know, I was a part of the steering committee to help bring this to Wycomico County. It was a very long, thoughtful process. We worked with the court system, with a lot of community leaders across the Lower Shore in general. So this is a really, really great thing for Wycomico, Somerset too, and who haven't had this. So, and you're still looking for volunteers, I guess? Is that, or what's the latest? And you're always trying to get more?
Every day, we are looking for volunteers. We have our training. We've gotten creative with it and virtual options now. But kids, you know, can enter care at any point, up until 18, or up, you know, and then they can sometimes stay a little bit longer with the system. But we need volunteers constantly, and we want a diverse group of volunteers. Not everyone looks the same. You don't have a blond-haired, blue-eyed little boy. That's not what enters foster care every day. You have all age ranges, all races, all religions, you know, people with a lot of different backgrounds. That's what we need. We need everyone.
What's the best way that they can, you know, focus on PAC-14 or in the audience or listening? What's the best way folks can get ahold of you?
Well, we can be reached, we have a website, lowershorecasa.org. Our phone number, for those who are listening, is 443-782-3585. And I would also just like to add, piggyback off what Jamie said, that, you know, even though we have recruited a great number of volunteers, 95% of those volunteers have already been assigned to cases. So those, and most of those cases are right here in Wycomico County.
Can I? I, you know, I don't know if you guys... This is just an option. This is just an option. This is a thought that I had, and I go to church every Sunday, and there's lots of great churches in this neighborhood, in this community, like Emmanuel Wesleyan or Oak Ridge Baptist Church, or I'm sure Shaney has a few churches that she can think of. But the church community absolutely should be a part of this program. Same with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. I'm sure you are aware of them. I, only thing I can, well, I'm sure we can, we're going to help out, but what I could say is definitely bring it to the attention of some of these local leaders, these pastors like Mark Bunting and Brian Moss and some others that I could think of. And they have open hearts, and they want to, they want to build the community up. That's why they have these churches, and this could be a way that they can give back to the community.
Absolutely. That would be wonderful. We would love to go to any of the churches and speak and spread the word out there and hopefully recruit some advocates.
You very well might. There's a lot of people that want to volunteer in those churches.
Wonderful.
A quick question. The children that you are advocating for, they're already in the court system, correct?
They are. They have already been adjudicated SENA, which is Child Need of Assistance, and they might be involved within home services. Some of them, the majority, are in the foster care system.
And then how do you handle the parents, the mothers, more likely? How do you do, do you bring a holistic approach, or you're just dealing with the children?
Primarily, we deal with the children. But in order to speak to that child's best interest, we have to get to know the collaterals. We want to know who is having the biggest influence or who has the biggest influence in this child's life. So that means speaking with parents, teachers, other guardians. So we do get to know that family, but our primary job is to advocate for that child's best interest.
Because, the reason why I said it, and when James said about the children... Because, reason why I said it, and James said about the children, I go to Wesley Temple and we had an organization called Mothers for Equal Justice, where they learn the justice system and they met the different law enforcement agencies. And I think the mothers, at that time, it was a different generation coming up, this was 10, 20 years ago. But I think we need to find a way, and I don't know if like Christ could do that, how we can help the mother. Because what happens with parents, because I had five sons, and what happens with the mothers, they have to wait till their children get in trouble before they can actually get help. They may cry for help before the child gets to that point, but they say, well, we have to have them in the juvenile system. And it still is going on today. So if we can some kind of way change the legislation to do, I know when I went to the conference the past week, they had something in Androna County, Fresh Start, and that helping kids preventative measures before they got to the point of getting into the justice system. I think it's some kind of way we need to look into that. And when I get back, I will be calling, calling you. Yeah, I need one of those.
And, you know, at Life Crisis, we touch a variety of different areas. And one of the areas where we do assist with that, and that's why it kind of came right in line for us to take on this program, was we provide counseling for the non-offending parents or caregivers and the children that are abused and neglected that, you know, go through the child advocacy centers in all three counties. I have a therapist house at each of those locations so the children can get immediate trauma therapy, as well as we have therapist houses in our main location here in Wycomico County to help women, children, victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, human trafficking. So I feel like we kind of work kind of that umbrella. This is one of our programs, we have the counseling program, we have the safe house if we need to help those victims have a place to come into. And totally interested in partnering and coming up with new programs and ideas on how we can kind of alter the course a little bit for these children and help them be successful individuals.
Thank you very much. You two great organizations for Wycomico County. We do appreciate being able to help you create the awareness and looking forward to working with you in the future too.
All right, thank you very much.
Next item on the works, on the agenda is a work session for the Wycomico County liquor dispensaries. We have our county executive, Julie Giordano here. I believe Mike Bizard is also going to be joining us at the table.
Morning.
Morning.
If you could each state your name and your title or your position, your company for the public.
My name is Michael Bizard. I own Cheers located in South Salisbury on the same block as the university.
All right, thank you for hearing us. So we are here to talk about a bill that we are interested in putting forward with our delegation. I just want to kind of set the foundation here. So I do not drink liquor. I don't own a restaurant, but I represent them because they are the ones that put me in office. And so we are a pro-business administration. I was counting, there are four business owners, there are four business guys on this council. So I know that you understand the importance of business. And so this was a way, you know, with inflation and things like that, you know, when I talked to these business owners, this was something that consistently was brought up, you know, across the county. One thing that we did was a lot of research, and so I'm just kind of setting the basis for this. So we tried to figure out first who the dispensary answers to. And the answer is no one, except for the comptroller. So the county council, county executive, no one in the county has any control over the dispensary. If someone who is under 21 years of age goes to the dispensary, there's no penalty. The liquor board doesn't handle it, everything goes to the comptroller. So one thing that we knew was that we wanted local control, regardless if that's council or whether that's executive or whatever that looked like, that we do, we needed some control on that. That was number one. Number two, the dispensary is not business friendly at all. As Mr. Norris stated, they have to go there. There is no delivery system. Employees have to leave work to go ahead and pick up things, so it is not a business-friendly model at all. But also, we are not planning on closing the dispensary, which we'll get more into in just a moment. So the dispensary is not closing at all. And so that's kind of where the precedent was with this. And I just kind of wanted to set that stage as to why this even came forward. And while I was out campaigning, as I said, this was brought up numerous times with many people who's, you know, who supported me, but also, I mean, this is just from business owners all over the county, so.
So, Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration. So the background of the bill from a process standpoint is I'm a big proponent of enabling legislation, which would give the county the power to do things instead of it being in Annapolis. And what this bill would do is simply give this county the power to do more licenses. This isn't, this bill will be sparse on details because of that. Because how I envision the bill, if it passes, it would take effect October 1st, that's when most bills take effect. So that would give this county council and the county executive's office plenty of time to do public input. We could do a commission if that's what you wanted to do with different people, people from dispensary, people from private. However, we would want to do it as a county because I would much rather have that conversation with you seven, our county council, our duly elected folks, rather than 188 in Annapolis. Now, the other model could have been writing a bill full of details that would go to Annapolis and then us testifying on every detail and potential amendments and things like that. And I just did not think that that was a proper model. Certainly, if that's the road you would like to take, where you would like, when we get a bill, to see it amended, to have several details in it, that's something we can look at doing. But the bill, the bill would simply be enabling. So anyone right now, to me, who is, you know, asking for specific details, I think it's appropriate for different people to ask for specific details, but that conversation really would take place in earnest if this bill passes, because then they'll have a seat at the table, and all stakeholders would, where we could kind of craft something on a local side. Also, if we do a bill with a lot of detail in it and we ever want to change it, we have to go back to the general assembly for that change. Enabling legislation would allow us to decide on how this would be today and tomorrow through our county elected officials. And that's what I think is appropriate. And that's also the same model, skipping ahead a bit, I use for the sanitary district where it's enabling legislation, which again, would allow us to set the parameters.
So the details of the bill, I know that there's been some, you know, rumors and things like that going around. Concerns that we heard were, one thing in particular is they don't want a liquor store on every corner, which I agree with, we do not want that either. So we are looking at the possibility of 10 additional licenses, two per council manic district. So not everything will be in two, not everything would be in four, it would be across the county. So two additional licenses per council manic district. That's number one. Number two, again, we're not closing the dispensary, so they would still be available. And like I said, I think another question that was asked was, how will we make up this revenue? I think you said the model like pretty well. I think we're going to see a decrease, honestly, just being transparent, and then it's going to go up because we're going to be pulling from revenue that we're losing to Delmar, Delaware, right across the state line. And anyway, and I think business-wise, I think Mike can kind of attest to that.
So.
Yeah, talk on the microphone.
Excuse me. So I've kind of put a pencil to everything. So if I was fortunate enough to get the category, and we have been here, I've been here 20 or plus or minus, you know, in reference to this issue. It would mean, myself picking up the category, I would probably add three or four employees to the tune of maybe $120,000 in additional payroll. Retail sales tax, it would, you know, the volume that I think that we would aim would probably add 15, $18,000 a month in retail sales tax would put me up about half a million dollars a year. I'm still working for the county and the state of Maryland. You know, and I would like to applaud Julie, the hybrid model that she is proposing. It doesn't cost a job at the dispensary. Yes, it will cost some volume at the dispensary, but over the years, the dispensary system has touted what great retailers they are, so it would even the playing field tremendously. You know, we've argued the fact that, you know, they're selling beer and wine, you know, and they were set up to only control the distribution of liquor. Well, here we are, if, you know, if the county council, you know, approves what we're trying to accomplish here and add 10 additional licenses, then, then it will be even playing field, let the dispensary continue to sell beer and wine. And that way, it's convenient for all of our customers because some of the comments that have been made over the years is that the dispensary system offered beer and wine to make it more convenient for their customers because that's what their customers ask. Well, my customers have asked the same thing. So it would become more convenient for all of our customers and it would allow our customers to have a choice on where they go. In a free market system, you know, competition, it creates price advantage, customer service. I mean, it's just nothing but positives to me. And that's pretty much the gist of it. So thank you, thank you for hearing me today.
Yeah, you were, you were on the original committee in 2008.
I was.
Right.
It's funny, I read over a lot of the notes, I don't throw anything away.
Yeah.
And, you know, Peter Francho made the comment, right, our comptroller, past comptroller, that, you know, government should not be in business and they should, you know, let the private enterprise flourish and create more jobs and create competition, which makes it better for the community.
It wasn't a total loss because I realized that the hybrid plan that's being presented now is exactly what your committee recommended, 10 stores and two in each district.
We, yeah, so maybe you read that somewhere.
Just a little while, just a little bit later.
We thought it was the best model because I feel like the concerns are valid, you know, and so we wanted to kind of, you know, try to adhere to something that works for us here in the county. But again, I mean, you know, I don't think the government belongs in profiteering at all, so, but, you know, I think this hybrid model, you know, kind of alleviates that. Plus, also just to add in, it would allow our restaurant owners to be able to buy from whoever they would like, so whatever distributor. So I just wanted to add that in as well, that that kind of opens that up. And many of them said they would still go to the dispensary for specific things, but having that freedom, I think is going to help them out a lot, especially with, you know, inflated costs and things like that right now.
I would say, I've always been a huge advocate of this, very much been trying to make something happen, even as of last year, we attempted even a modified version. Today, I'd still like to, in spite of what the, what may move forward here in Annapolis, I'd still like to see some type of an MOU on the beer, wine and spritzers. I don't think they're selling the beer, but the wine and spritzers, at least some type of a local MOU, because I don't think the autonomy should be completely with the store itself. I think there has to be some oversight here. So I really would like to see that ahead of time. I think a lot of what the questions might be here tonight, especially on my part today, is not so much any type of an effort whatsoever to, to not move this forward, it's just more of a role as a devil's advocate to make sure that we're being very careful about the steps that we take. Bunky, I know you had made the comment that it's very simple and it's enabling legislation. I would like to, you know, I would have to ask, if it's relatively a simple matter of enabling legislation, is there any way that we can see the bill? Because I think the council would want to know what it was, if it's sending up a letter of endorsement for the bill, we certainly want to know what it is legislatively. If we were to just send, I guess, a blind letter and then the bill went through, what is the amendment process in the future? If the public or there's some issues that the council or the public or even the executive may think, oh, this isn't exactly what we had in mind, what might that process be?
Yeah, we hoped to have the bill last week, but the bill drafter, and I spoke to him, was, it seemed like, he had questions because where he's dealt before is the county has had the monopoly without the three additional licenses. So he said, you know, Buster's and the Norris Brothers and what have you. So we talked about that, so he was going to go back and do more research because that seemed like a novel thing that we had both, you know, things going on. So that's why we don't have a bill today. So we hope to have it this week.
Yes, I think Mr. Abish made a very good point. He certainly would want that type of clarification as to whether the 10 automatically, I don't think it would eliminate his store, but there could be some real conflicts. I'm not, I'm not really familiar, I don't drink either, not a lot, I mean. But I don't know where these three stores are. I probably should as a county representative, but I've never even delved into it. And I don't know what districts they may already be in and if that could have possibly affected Mr. Abish or not. Yes, certainly.
I'll probably be the lone wolf here. I do not think that we need any more liquor stores. And just so happened on the news last night on ABC News, the growing concern of young people, young adults that are drinking with a liver condition. And you know, when they start the liver condition, that means cirrhosis of the liver. You're right near Salisbury University and you're not going to tell me that some student or some adult is not going to buy alcohol for an 18-year-old because they're not going to check their IDs. I think we need to have public input, public input before any bill goes to Annapolis. I know the churches are going to be against this. I'm against it because I have Buster's in District 1, because I've gone there. I have, there's Boonies down the road, I don't know if when they're closed, it's season, I don't think they're open year-round. There's Boonies, there's, then there would be Brew River in the District 1, and then...
Brew River wouldn't be a distributor though, so.
It would be an on-premise.
Yeah, that's an on-premise.
Well, they already sell alcohol.
Right, right, so.
They don't want to buy it from the dispensary.
Right, that they could buy it from a different store, but please keep in mind too, councilman or councilwoman, a lot of these stores are already in existence. So for example, Cheers already sells beer and wine, it would just be bringing liquor into that store specifically.
So my concern, why would we, when I was on the city council, I was against furnishing transportation for young people to come downtown and to these establishments to get drunk. I was against that. And I'm still against having access, now we talk about opioid and all that kind of stuff, but we're promoting young people to drink. I know they're going to get it, but we, if you're already selling beer, and I was for EVOs, because I voted for them to go on Eastern Shore Drive, I support, I support free enterprise, but there are some things that need to have some kind of type of control. I do not believe the dispensary sells alcohol to 18-year-olds. They do not sell beer because they don't want to take it from the people that do sell beer. And I just think Brew River, they won't be able, naturally, they don't control the prices, what you sell for beer and all that. But I was a bar manager and I didn't have a problem going and getting alcohol, you know, I had a vehicle and pick it up. But I just think that this is not the right go. And I know the majority may support it, but personally, I do not support it because of the youth that we're influencing. And you're near the college, you have those wild parties in the neighborhood where they get access to alcohol and liquor already. Now they're going to have more access to alcohol and liquor. And I think, and then when I heard this health issue about young, the youth, the younger, they're getting younger and younger, having problems with alcohol, and that's promoting alcoholism among the young. And that is one of my main concerns. Now, I don't want, people say here, I'm against free enterprise. I am not against it, because I like to see a jazz club come here. So I'm not, look, I'm not against free enterprise, but I'm...
You want them to sell liquor? No, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing.
They got, Manhattan has already got liquor, the liquor license, that's a liquor license board. But my concern is, then when you have one, you say you're going to have 10, somebody's going to come up, so what, they have, can sell liquor, how come I can't do it?
Because of the bill that's being passed.
Well, that's not fair, they can oppose the bill, it's not fair, they can go and lobby for them to have a store. We do not need any more liquor stores in this community. We have, we have, what is it, Hoopers or, is it Hoopers?
Hoppers.
Hoppers, whoever it is, they're right near your establishment, right across the street. So why would you want to sell liquor when you already have somebody selling it? That's my point too.
But they, it's where they're getting the liquor from.
I, well, I'm against it.
Understood, understood.
I'm against, I'm against the bill.
Yeah.
I'm against the bill.
And also, just, you know, for reference too, there are only two counties left in the state of Maryland that do this, and it's us and Montgomery County.
It's not, no problem being the lone wolf, be the lone wolf, might be the best.
Well, in government, you...
I mean, I'm not going to, I know that a lot, few of them agree with that, but I just want to make it a matter of record. but I just want to make it a matter of record since I won't be here, that I think we need to see the, get the public input about this. The voters that voted, men, women, and everybody at this table, then, how they feel before we go and promote something that people may not like. You see, and we need to hear them, you know.
Sure.
And that should go with the majority, of course.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'd like to respond.
Okay, fine.
Just for myself.
Okay.
So, I've been at my location for forty-two years.
I know you have, I've been.
I am, my patented tagline to anyone that brings this subject up, I'm alumni from Salisbury University, Asbury is my church. I live in this community. This is how I feed my family, and I take what I do very seriously. My, I let my reputation stand for itself. Check with the licensing board, the sheriff's department, Maryland State Police, very cooperative relationship. I invite cops and shops, I invite the liquor licensing board to come in and monitor on busy days, especially when the university is in session. I take what I do seriously, and it is, that is the attitude that I pass along to my staff. Selling an extra six-pack is not going to roll me over the top. And I believe that, you know, living in this community, some of the retailers that are in our, our county do not reside in the county. And, you know, there's always the rumor that this guy will sell to anybody that sees over the counter. I'm not that guy.
No. I don't think you are either, but I'm just saying, as long as we get the public input and outreach to the public to let them know what happened, I'm just, my personal thing is, I wouldn't want to see it, but I'm, I'm just, just me. But I wouldn't go out, I just want to make sure the public hears this bill and make sure you have that public hearing or whatever.
In the county now, there's well over a hundred off-premise beer and wine license, and there are six locations to buy liquor. It is already convenient to buy beer and wine. It is not convenient to buy liquor, and it is not against the law to buy liquor.
No, no.
I, I understand where Shaney's coming from, because she doesn't want to see the growth of alcoholism in the community, and I, I agree with that. But I do agree with free enterprise, and I do understand that it is unfair for a business such as yourself, such as Brew River, such as Evo, to have to go to certain dispensaries, and they're only allowed these certain rules that they have to follow, and there's only, it seems like there's only a few of them. There's not a whole lot of options, and I, you know, I would, I would definitely entertain an idea of, of the free enterprise. I think it, it'd be more fair for businesses. I'm sure there's many, many more restaurants that would be in favor of this because it will give them options. I'm not, you know, a fan of a liquor board on, a liquor store on every corner, I don't think anyone in this room wants to see that. But if our community is as strong with the faith base as I think it is, we shouldn't see that. We should actually, we should see it kind of stay about the same, and people are just going to go ahead and get their liquor. These restaurants are going to be able to buy their liquor from wherever they want to buy it. If they get a better price, they get a better price, and they can make more money and pay their employees more money or hire more people. So ultimately, that, it, it seems, from my perspective and from the way I look at it, it seems like it's an opportunity for us to grow our, our economic growth in the community. I know that there is a million dollars that we bring in from the liquor board, but again, I don't think that government should be in charge of your choice on where you get your liquor. That's, that's my thoughts.
I'll get a question for you as well. When this goes to Annapolis, this enabling legislation, does the enabling legislation, does it talk about ten stores in two districts?
It could, you know, that...
I'm trying to get an idea of what this council is going to send to Annapolis to ask them to approve.
Well, my, what I was going to do is get the bill, give it to you, and if you want that in there, then it ought to be in there. But our, so all that's part of the local conversation, but we absolutely can put that in enabling legislation that then the county would have to go back to Annapolis if they ever wanted to raise that number. And I'm fine with putting it in there because that's our, our thought as well.
The reason I ask that is because, and I don't know how the systems might work, but it could be, whereas to alleviate Shaney's concerns, maybe we would just privatize the three county stores. We already have three more in existence, then we'll have six in Wacomico County. I don't know why, I mean, somebody said two times five districts is ten, but that could sort of leave us with, with six to begin with, but I'm not sure how detailed this bill is supposed to be or is going to be. I think that's what we're trying to figure out. Where does it go? If a letter of endorsement goes out from the council, what is it that's getting, being endorsed?
Well, yeah, I don't...
How far away do we have?
I don't expect any letter of endorsement until you're able to see the bill, you know, and unfortunately...
Well, and I think what he's trying to ask, too, is, is I think the initial legislation was for us to have the local control, just because right now we don't. It's, it's, you know, through the comptroller.
And to add on to that, one thing that I know you, you've asked as well, is, from the executive office, we've asked for a sales breakdown on how much they sell in categories, including liquor, weeks ago, and I asked again for a timeline when they could get that to us. The dispensary has been non-responsive.
I know.
So it's really tough for us to, because I anticipate someone's going to project, well, what would be the loss to the dispensary? It's incredibly difficult to project anything when you have a dispensary system that apparently won't answer the council president's request for that, nor the executive's office. And that, that's an issue.
It is.
One thing I'd like to bring to your attention, there's a group that I happen to be a member of, it's the Maryland State Retail Association, encompasses most of the liquor stores in the state. And a lot of...
Oh, thank you.
And a lot of the, the numbers that they use in order to pick how many licenses are going to be in a county, it's population-based. So there, there's a factor that you can put in, you know. Apparently, Dorchester County would be an example. I think that a liquor license in Dorchester County is just like a beer license in Wacomico County. They're a dime a dozen, and the market is flooded with them. And it does not give any one retailer the opportunity to be the guy, to be, you know, the, the leader, the industry leader. I think with, you know, the limited number, it gives the, the opportunity for everyone, for a retailer to be dominant and, and, you know, employing more people. I mean, I think it's a snowball. I mean, there's a lot of good things that can happen with this.
One thing I'd like to comment on is, this is, you know, just came, just popped in my head. You know, we do have a lack of these stores, and, and I'm not, like, again, I'm not a proponent of bringing up alcohol, we don't, we just, you know, we need less of it, but I'm not in a fan of us controlling what you can do with your own business. What I have noticed, though, is I have lived in, in Pittsfield, all right, and if you want to get any sort of liquor, you've got to drive to Delaware. We just lost revenue right there. They're going to get it, it's just where they get it. You can get beer and wine in Pittsfield, that's it. If you live in Maradella or, or District Two, there's really not a whole lot of options. You've got to drive a long way to get anything. And that's just something that, that I've noticed, just driving around and living in the community, so.
And Councilman, I think that's an excellent point, because I believe that our, our opening this up the private industry, maybe they won't be able to have prices low as tax-free liquor in Delmar, Delaware. However, convenience matters. So if, if tax-free liquor in Delmar, Delaware is your closest place and or the cheapest, that's where you're going to get it. However, if there's a place between your place and Del, and Delmar, Delaware, maybe you're willing to pay an extra dollar. You know, the convenience will matter and positively.
And they're not always the cheapest either. I mean, they, they look at our prices and mirror them because they can make more money off of, you know, because they don't get taxed, so...
Well, and I think one thing that we have to remember, too, is, I know it's hard to do this, but I really tried, again, as not a liquor drinker at all, I really tried to remove the product and think about the process. And so a friend of mine owns a dance studio, and he called me and he said, what are you trying to do? This is, you know, this is revenue for the county, why would you do this? And I said, okay. I said, well, actually, how I'm going to make it up is that I'm going to close all the dance studios, and everybody has to register through Rec and Parks through county. And he said, well, that's not fair, you can't do that, that's my business. And I said, that's exactly what we're doing to these business owners. So the way I looked at it was, I really tried to remove the fact of it being liquor and looked at it as, this is their livelihood, and we right now are handcuffing them with a statewide three-tiered system, and Wacomico has now made it a four-tiered system. So I have to look at it as not the product, but the policy and how we do things. And so regardless of what the product is, you know, I think that we need to look at making sure that we are business-friendly and that we're doing everything we can, you know, to help our businesses, so...
You know, in reference to losing volume to tax-free liquors over the line in Delaware.
Really quick, I'm not closing dance studios, I really wasn't. I just was using as an example, sorry. Put that on the record.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I know. I'll have the dance people in here, yeah.
Maryland is a nine percent alcohol sales state, okay? Right off the bat, Delaware is nine percent better. And the way that our county dispensary system marks product up, I believe that they're marking it up twenty-five percent as just Mr. Collins has stated in the past, but, you know, it's either, it's marked up from the front line, which is one bottle, or the discounted price. And I believe Wacomico is off the front line, right? So they're basing their margin off higher. And then these three licensed right now, convenience license we'll call them for liquor, they buy it from the dispensary at a case discount and they mark it up again. So right now, going to Delaware, a consumer from Wacomico County is probably saving twenty-five percent. In a free-market enterprise, there's the nine percent to worry about, but, you know, you know, it's the margin-volume argument in retail, a little bit lower margin and drive more volume. We would, the retail sales tax implications alone would be massive to me. So there, there's so many more positives that, you know, you're not seeing, you know. Drive up to the state line and see how many Maryland tags you see in front of tax-free. It's a lot. It's a lot.
Are you saying that...
Hold on, hold on, show you real quick. Go.
The licenses, how are they going to be picked? How are you going to pick who gets the ten licenses?
That would be up to this county and to, to do that process.
That should been, that should be decided before we endorse any kind of a letter of support.
So you would want that in the bill in Annapolis?
Well, before we even send any kind of letter of support. I mean, I'm listening to one retailer sitting here, and everything he's said today, pretty much, don't take this personally, but you're assuming you're going to get one of these licenses, and I'm wondering how and who has decided how we're going to get, how we're going to distribute ten licenses in, in these districts. That needs to be, that needs to be vetted. We need to know that before we do sign any kind of letter of support, because I can tell you, you're going to have a big fight on your hands amongst retailers, you know. You're talking about competing with Del, Delmar, okay? District Five stretches from the west side of Delmar all the way to the Worcester Line. So if you really want to compete with Delmar and their liquor stores, does that mean you're going to put two liquor stores in Delmar? Or are you going to put no liquor stores in Delmar? Are you going to put one in Delmar and two somewhere else? So that's, you know, that needs, before we have any kind of support, we need to know how that's going to work. The disparity grant, you know, we had a legislative breakfast meeting a couple, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and one of our delegates brought up, are you willing to put your eleven million-dollar disparity grant in jeopardy, you know, by giving up this million dollars in revenue that you're willing to give up?
I think in the way it's been proposed, that we're not closing the dispensaries, there's still income.
I understand that, I understand that.
So it's not, it's not a million dollars.
And also...
I'm asking Julie and Bonky this question.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've talked to the other Eastern Shore delegation besides that one, and one has nothing to do with the other. One has absolutely nothing to do with the other. What I'm saying is, is that the amount of revenue that we bring in from a liquor, from liquor, has nothing to do with the disparity grant. Like, it's two totally separate things that they look at.
I know that.
So, so what I'm saying is, even if we were to get rid of the dispensaries completely, it's not going to get rid of our disparity grant.
Mrs. Giordano, you've got delegates up there that have to vote to say, you know, we're going to give Wacomico County eleven million dollars.
Twelve million.
And you're, pardon me?
Twelve million.
Twelve. And I'm reiterating what the other delegate said.
So then you have, you're probably going to have delegates that say, do they really need it because, you know, they just gave away a million dollars in revenue, or almost a million dollars.
But that argument, sorry, that argument could be made literally for every other county who gets the disparity grant, like Prince George's, you know, who, who gets the disparity grant and does not have our system. They have no dispensary. I worked on the 2016 HB 1395 that brought this county a million dollars more in disparity grant funding. And we worked incredibly hard. It was Delegate Anderton's bill, we had no cross-file, it wasn't a delegation bill, and we got it passed fifteen minutes before Siney Die was gavelled out. And that brought a million dollars more to this county. So I've worked on disparity grant bills, and this, this does not have anything to do with disparity.
Wait a minute, you had a delegate that said it could. At breakfast, you had a delegate that said, said that. You had the delegate that happens to be, you know...
Speaker pro temp.
Okay, you said it, I didn't. But anyway, you know, so you have to question that. Now, I'm going to say, Mrs. Shaney said where she stood. I have no problem with letting the bars and restaurants that want to buy from the distributors, buy from the distributors, okay? I have no problem with that. I've said that for years. But I really have reservations here about where we're going with these ten licenses, how they're going to be distributed, are they, is it going to be whoever can afford them the most? Is it going to be special favors? Is it going to be... We need that answer. We don't have that answer.
So there's two different models to do the bill. There's the way that I've proposed, which is enabling legislation that then allows us the six-month window to figure those things out, and you don't have to do any of, any of it. If it's enabling, this gives the power to the county council and the executive, or really, the county council's legislative body, to put those things forward and to pass what you're going to pass. But the model it seems like you would like us to do is ahead of time, get together, have every detail, put that in the bill, and then go to Annapolis with it. And then the downside, which is fine, that's how some bills are done, the downside, though, is if anyone ever wants to change any part of that bill in the future, they have to go back to Annapolis, and it's not giving the county power. And I'd like to, our county to have the power in this space. You, you could potentially, with enabling legislation, allow what you would like, but then vote against, potentially as a county council, doing the ten. That, that would be up to you as a legislative body.
Article 2B controls liquor sales in the state, and most anything that gets done now that gets changed, you know, if you wanted, at one time, we couldn't sell liquor on Sundays, okay? Or alcohol on Sundays, you know, it had to go to Article 2B to be, it had to go to the state. So it has to go to the state most likely anyway. You know, I don't think, and I don't think we're going to get enabling legislation to just open up anything we want to do with liquor or alcohol sales in Wacomico County. I don't think that's going to happen.
I, I think we would get enabling legislation to put us on par with the twenty-two, twenty-one other jurisdictions that don't have to go through a dispensary, but with us keeping the dispensary. And, and one thing that I don't think is said enough is, I, I have faith in the dispensary. I think they'll be able to compete. I think that there's this thought that immediately, like, oh, the dispensary will go away. No, I, I have faith in just the people out there that they'd be able to compete in the private market. I, I don't know why, I don't know why other people aren't. So don't, don't share my faith in that.
I have another question. If, if they can't compete, okay?
Some beer.
And they have to close, they have long-term leases on their buildings, and they can't be sold to somebody else with a liquor store. Does the county pick up and pay, pay off those leases? Does taxpayers have to pay off those leases if the liquor stores can't, can't operate?
Something I believe we'd need to talk to our legal counsel about and see how we would be able to, you know, that's a good question. We'd have to certainly sit down and, and talk about what our legal options would be at that point.
The premise of this is to, to keep government from competing against private enterprise. Why would we still keep the three liquor stores?
Well, I believe it's, I believe the hybrid model, model's appropriate. We, we have as a county traditionally relied on, on the other, on the dispensary, and if they can compete in the private market, then I'm fine allowing them to compete, you know?
We're, we're going to be looking later at the sanitary commission, enabling legislation...
We're, we're going to be looking later at the sanitary commission, enabling legislation. And in that bill, which we do have the bill for that, it simply adds Wacomiko County to the list of other counties. Is this enabling legislation that you're referring to on this bill, is it going to be similar, or is it going to be entirely separate?
I'm not-
The bill for the liquor, for, for the liquor.
Which is being added.
Are we, is our county being added to maybe some other counties as enabling, or?
I, I don't have the, I don't have the draft of the bill yet. So liquor code is significantly more intricate, which is why it's taken them longer. So I highly doubt the bill would be as simple as, in fact, I was surprised that the sanitary district was that simple.
It's going to be, it's going to have to be very, much more specific.
Potentially.
Yeah. And here's another concern I have too. And, and I want to move this forward, but here's, I have some concerns. If we get it into, if we put it into Annapolis now, in whatever form it might be, I'm not sure. And it looks to me like, especially with the public hearings coming after the bill's been in Annapolis, and I think that's going to be a really rocky road, because this council put forward the elected school boards, and immediately, they threw it right back in our faces. I talked to one of the centers. I said, no, we're going to pass this, and then we're going to the public hearings, and if the public really has a huge resistance, we'll revisit it. Didn't, didn't wash. But that being said, anything that follows will have to be amended. Like you said, it, it won't, doesn't go into effect until October. So we're going to be making amendments all the way through 2024. So we, do we get an enabling now with whatever parameters they're going to be, just to know that nothing's going to be in full swing until '24? Or do we try to work over the next few months to put a bill in that we know is going to be exactly what we're looking for and what Annapolis can accept?
Well, the, the bill, if it were successful, would take effect October 1st, 2023.
Right. But you were referencing in your, in your note that we would be able to make several amendments or adjustments. We can do that during the summer session?
If, if it's enabling legislation, as I envision it, then this county council would get to set the-
All right, that's what I'm getting at. So then, what is going up there is just simply going to be sort of a blank check, saying the county is going to be allowed to do this. I'm trying to figure out what's, what's going to Annapolis.
That's what, that's what I've asked for from bill drafting, so.
So maybe very similar to what we're doing with the sanitary commission.
Yep.
And a lot of the questions Shaney has, what Joe has, it's kind of a moot point. We'll be addressing those later on, right?
Yes.
So yes.
So you're going to, yeah.
The legislative body would be able to, basically, what we're asking for is you all to be able to make the decision as to how we move forward. So if, if we say the only thing we want to do is allow the, you know, businesses to be able to buy from their distributors, and that's it, that would be up to you. If you all said, we're closing the dispensaries, and we're just going to allow private market, that would be up to you. But we're trying to put the power in your hands as opposed to the comptroller.
You know, before we, John brought up the elected school board. That was another, I guess you'd call it a fight that we went through for several years, you know? And one of the things that came up is we needed to have town hall meetings-
That's right.
-and, and more than one. And I think before this council sends up any kind of letter for enabling legislation, we need to have public input.
I agree. And that's what I'm saying, you know, I've always said that. You're, you're, we will be passing legislation that will be affecting our community. And you're putting something, now, I, I think John said something, you start doing this in 2008, and this is 2022. So I believe if you had public input back then, you wouldn't be sitting where you are today. And I think that dispensaries now, they do not sell beer. So if you do away with them going to the other establishment, 10, whatever you say, they, the dispensary should be able to be competitive and by opening them up to sell beer.
Mm-hmm.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, hundred, sell, sell beer. And they may be selling, might sell it cheaper and be competitive in the establishment. Also, when you do liquor licensing, when they get their liquor license, you should get police reports on police calls to some of these establishments that are already selling liquor in the bars, because that would be a concern for some communities. And I got a list many years ago on city council, and you'd be surprised how many police calls are being made at some of these establishments. So before I would even give a license or recommend a license, I don't want to see the police calls at these establishments, because these establishments are on businesses in the county. They're already, they're representing us. And I think that we need to take a lot in consideration. No, we may be the only county or one or two counties. Prince George has got a high crime rate. Every time I turn on, look at my phone, there's a murder, there's something, the crime rate. And I don't know what it's, why it's, I'm not saying it's contributing to alcohol, but the, the crime rate is, is, is high amongst Prince George's County as an example. Now, I'm, all this needs to be considered. All this needs to be considered. And now, Pittsfield, you can go to Tillman Road. Pittsfield ain't far from Tillman Road from acting.
But also, no, I, I, like, I also just want to reiterate, the enabling legislation doesn't do anything with our liquor. It doesn't change anything. If we get the enabling legislation done and then backed down here, if we decided to keep the system in place that we have, we could do that. But it's giving us the power, correct, to, to do it. So the enabling legislation is allowing, is basically saying, hey, Annapolis, when it comes to liquor, Wacomiko County Council is going to decide what's best for its community. That's all we're asking for in the enabling legislation. So it's not getting rid of anything. It's not changing anything. It's giving you all the power to be able to make those decisions. That's why we can have the works. Like, right now, we can't, I mean, we could have public input, but it's kind of irrelevant because of our system. We can't change our system. So even if people were to come in right now without this bill, no changes can be made. So that's why we're trying to get this enabling legislation saying, hey, we want our county council to be able to be able to make the decision of what we want to do with liquor in Wacomiko.
But it is relevant. County input is, I mean, community input is relevant.
No, 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 it is. But what I'm saying, no, no, I'm not saying it's not relevant. My point is, is that this legislation just gives you all the power. So once we hear from the community, then you would be able to say, based on what the community wants, this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm going to give Shanay a chance here, because we're running out of time here. Go ahead, Shanay.
So I like the hybrid model, and I like the idea of it. I think we need more information. We need public input on it. But I, but I like it. And James kind of stole my thunder earlier. I'm from Willards, and Willard, Pittsfield, Powellville, Parkland, we either go to Gumburro Liquors, or we go to Worcester County. That's lost revenue. So I can see where there is a benefit to this as well.
And one, just one quick thing. I, I, I love the idea of giving the local council authority and ability to govern more locally instead of having the state tell us what we can and can't do. That, that is something that I do like to hear.
Just go on. Josh.
All right.
I'll just say, well, first of all, as I said when I was first running years ago, I don't think that Wacomiko County should be in the business of, in the alcohol business or in the nursing home business or other businesses that we are in. But nonetheless, we are, and it's a-
And you get older, better nursing home.
And it's a very, and it's a great nursing home, and we do, and the county does a great job actually in running the, you know, our, look at our numbers, which, by the way, we should probably have them to come and explain their position before the council, before we jump into anything. But nonetheless, you know, I spent a couple of years working in the General Assembly, working for the Chair of the Education, Elementary and Affairs Committee. I was in this, in, in that, I was the position that helped move through these things. Couple of things, if you want to get this bill passed, don't put it in this year. Obviously, and, but let me be clear, enabling legislation is one thing. You can't do that generally on alcohol bills. It just doesn't, they don't allow you. There's so many sticking points to so many other questions. You do not want the thing to die. If it starts to die, they're going to, then, it's going to be the bill that comes up next year, and you're like, hey, wasn't that the bill we saw last year that was dying? Like, yeah, okay, well, why do I want to pass it this year? So it's better to just come in with a full plan. I don't know, Ms. Giordano or Ms. Luffin, I don't know if you have both met with Ben Barnes yet, but, you know, the Chair of the Appropriations County is not sitting in Wacomiko County anymore. Yes, I'm awesome that we've now got a representative on the Appropriations Committee. However, if the Speaker Pro Tem, the number two person in this, in the House, is telling you, hey, you're going to lose your disparity grant, potentially, if you run down, and we've been hearing this for years. And let me be clear, the disparity grant is, goes between 7 and 11% of our total operating revenue. It's great that it's going to benefit. I definitely, I think what we are all discussing, the intent is the right way to go, but we cannot dance around. We've got to be very serious. This is a serious issue. So $12 million to lose that? What, what, how does Montgomery County, the citizens of Montgomery County and Prince George's County, how do they benefit from giving their dollars that they've earned from their jobs to the citizens of Wacomiko County? They don't. So we've got to come back. We've got to make sure that you have a right plan in place. I'd rather us go through a whole year of, I mean, heck, less of a year than now. You can have a plan in place, have done the hearing, have a solid plan that has had a, you know, a, and thoughtfully thought through so that we are ready and prepared. But otherwise, please listen to the Speaker Pro Tem. She's not kidding when she says we can lose it. There's no reason for us to continue to have a disparity grant given us. This is just a giant chunk, check of money that goes to us as a county because we're poor. So, and by the way, it is not, it is not like it was, you know, a couple of years ago. It was great when we had Senate President Miller. He knew where Wacomiko County was. He loved us. The rest of the folks that are reading, leading the state now barely can pronounce our, our county's name, let alone tell us where it is on the map. So I think we need to tread lightly and be very thoughtful as to where we're going to do and exactly how we're going to do it. But if we want to get there, I think we can get in a good space that we could actually make real change, so.